Good evening. Today is November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is now five thirty P M. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I assume we do have a quorum present, and thank you all for being here this evening. Councilor Carolina will give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand, Paul St. Heavenly Father, we come together this day asking for guidance, wisdom, support, and peace in this world. As we begin this meeting, bring us together as elected officials in nurturing the bonds of our communities, strengthen and bless this country as we go through challenging times in America and the conflicts currently experienced in parts of this world. Our prayers are for peaceful coexistence of mankind throughout the world. Let us continue to emphasize our responsibilities for protecting and defending our Constitution, which is the basis for this country's foundation. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity and progress in Georgetown County. Continued peace and blessings to all in our county, state, country, and worldwide, in your mighty name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred thousand, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina. We move down to the approval of our agenda. The agenda has been passed out to all of our council members. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Agenda has been approved. We'll go down to our special reports and presentation. Tonight, our nonprofit spotlight would be the Benel Youth Board, who will make the presentation for us this evening, can my understanding? Coordinated by Ms. Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Luke Kibler, and I'm a senior at Waukamaw High School. Last year, I served as the chair of the Community Service Committee, and this year, I'm fortunate enough to serve as the president of the Benel Foundation Youth Board.
Hi, my name is Molly Congdon, and I was the secretary of the board last year, and this year, I am the vice president, and we are so excited to share with you a bit about the Youth Board.
The first thing you may be wondering is, well, what exactly is the Youth Board? We are a group of high school juniors and seniors representing Waukamaw, Georgetown, Carvers Bay, Andrews, and Low Country Prep. Thanks to the generosity of Frances P. Benel and the Benel Foundation, we have been given the opportunity to develop our leadership skills and to increase our involvement in local philanthropy. We do this through three outlets: our community service projects, special events, and grants.
One of the most important qualities of our Youth Board is our commitment to community service. The founding principles of the Board, other than integrity, inclusion, and equity, is intentionality. The Board is committed to intentionally positive and purposeful team engagement, as well as investment in community and partnership. Throughout the past two years, our Board has created and put out two blessing boxes in specific places in our community. As of now, we have one at Midney Building in Georgetown and at the Carvers Bay Library. The blessing boxes are filled with personal hijinks supplies such as soap, body wash, and shampoo, and they are free to anyone who needs them. They are refilled as needed by members of our Board. Our goal for these boxes is to put one in each area of our county: Georgetown, Polley's Island, Carvers Bay, and Andrews. We also involve the high schools in our project by organizing donation drives at each of their respective schools. The next one of these donation drives will be in January in hopes of putting out the next blessing box in March. Another thing we do for our community service outreach is the canned food drive, which we partnered with all the high schools this year, and we actually just got done on Monday, and we brought all of our donations to Helping Hands in Georgetown.
In addition to our yearly community service projects, we also plan a few special events for the community to participate in. One of these events is our annual trunk retreat. One of the tenants of the Benel Foundation is to encourage positive youth development, which is not just limited to the Youth Board. This year, we recruited help from some of the local high schools to put on the best show for our elementary students in the area. It was a treat to be able to interact with our community in this way, and we're really excited to bring in some students who may not have known about the Youth Board. Another goal of the Benel Foundation is to improve the quality of life in Georgetown County. We work towards these goals by providing necessities through our blessing boxes and canned food drives, but also by working to make the community a more joyful place to live. Last year, we planned a drive movie for families with kids to attend, and this year, we'll be hosting a second drive. That's going to be occurring on December the eighth at the Beck Rack Center, and we will be showing a Christmas movie in the hopes of spreading joy and positivity at the end of this year. We're hoping to share the holiday spirit with as many people as possible. Finally, we will also be participating in the Georgetown Christmas Parade, so if anyone is in the streets, please keep an eye out for us.
One of the most important and unique parts about our Youth Board is that we are able to give grants to local nonprofit organizations. Requests for grants go up to two thousand five hundred dollars to support special projects within nonprofit organizations. These special events are defined as events that launch new activities or programs. For example, we funded the Bring Harriet Home project, which helped allow all the fourth graders in the community to go and watch historical reenactment performance by Natalie Days and take a tour of Harriet Tubman's home.
Above all else, the Youth Board is an opportunity for students like ourselves to come together, improve our leadership skills, and celebrate our achievements. Personally, the Youth Board has given me an opportunity to make friends with people I would not have otherwise met. The connections and skills that we get to learn on the Youth Board are sure to prove invaluable as we take our next steps forward in life.
Thank you so much for giving us your time today. For more information about any activities or any questions you may have, please check out our website, benel.org, and follow our Instagram and Facebook at Benel Youth Board. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council, or questions from council? Thank you for all your deal within the community. Thank you all for bringing the youth together within Georgetown. Appreciate you. Great presentation. We move on down to our Employee of the Quarter recognition. We have our Human Resource Director, Mr. Walt Ackerman.
Our latest employee of the quarter was, we don't think about what he's got to do tomorrow, so... He's going to be a minute coming up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our employee of the quarter for this month is Mr. Harrison Walker. And this is not a pre-planned event, but Mr. Harrison is one of our heavy equipment operators, and you all heard quite a lot over the last little bit about heavy equipment operators. Mr. Walker is actually, his primary role is a motor grader operator. He's one of the people who goes out and smoothes county roads, whether they be rock roads, dirt roads. If they're putting rock, new rock on a road, he spreads that new rock out. But in addition to that, he has a Class A C D L. He moves equipment around, and he can drive backos, trackos, bulldozers. You name it, he's a jack-of-all-trades. And one reason he's being nominated as employee of the quarter is, as you all know from prior discussions, we've been very shorthanded, and Mr. Walker has been basically taking care of two road areas where normally two motor graders would do the work, and he's taken on both of those areas, has been for quite some time. Has all the right in the world to complain, but never does. And he's just a fantastic team member, goes above and beyond every single day, and for that, we're proud to recognize him as our employee of the quarter. Thank you, sir. It's kind of hard to run a lot. We're going to go and get some pictures. Mr. Chairman, if you would. You were going to present the award. We're just going to shake hands because the award was inadvertently left across the street, so... We'll superimpose it later.
I will deliver the speech.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. It's great to have employees being a part of Team Georgetown. We move on down to Mr. Dwight McEnville, revising the name of the auditorium at the Waukamaw Neck Branch Library to Deba Do Cross Auditorium.
Thank you, Chairman Moran, to members of county council. Don't worry, I'm not here to ask you for any money. I do want to tell you during this kind of Thanksgiving about a wonderful lady, Jeanne Cross. She came to us at a very key time. I know if you're over the age of thirty, the year 2009 brings a chill right down your spine. And that was, of course, when the economy of the United States hit rock bottom. We almost faced a great recession. At that time, the Waukamaw Library was on the path to be rebuilt into the beautiful facility as to today. Some of you may remember that it was a crummyest facility, library system, serving the busiest place in the county. Jeanne Cross was there, and she said, "Don't despair, let's focus on this. Let's raise a ton of money to make this thing happen." The lady rolled up her sleeves, and she did it. Of course, she had a lot of help, but she did it. Without her spirit, we wouldn't have that facility now. You know, we wouldn't have over eleven thousand citizens each year using that library for over eight hundred public programs. We wouldn't have three thousand kids involved in activities there, you know, ranging from learning how to fly gizmos that they make on-site, all of the little instruments that they have, to painting, to speaking, to performers, to learning about literacy. We wouldn't have adults learning ukuleles in the auditorium. We wouldn't have people doing calisthenics there. We wouldn't have people listening to lectures there. We wouldn't have theater, we wouldn't have music, we wouldn't have poetry. None of that would have happened in that auditorium because that auditorium probably would have been cut out of the plans because we wouldn't have the money to do it. So the library board unanimously has voted to have the auditorium renamed the Deba Do Cross Auditorium. The donors to the Deba Do Auditorium have agreed to this wholeheartedly, and the friends of the Waukamaw Library have also voted unanimously in favor of this. How can you stand against this? I don't think at all. I think you're going to embrace it unanimously, and so I encourage you to. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Beckenfield. Any question from council?
I just would like to mention that this gentleman that just spoke, I met him in 2011 when I was new to council, and he was our librarian then, and he's still our librarian. And I nicknamed him the Madison Avenue Flash because he could sell anything, including the Waukamaw Library. And we've come a long way, and I remember he and I debating the need for libraries, and I was on the side of technology and computers, and he was on the side of libraries, and he's still here. So he won. And I'll leave it at that, but he's a great guy, and he's done a heck of a job. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion, any motion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the request to revise the name of the auditorium at the Waukamaw Neck Branch Library to Deba Do Cross Auditorium?
Chair, I'd like to move that we rename the auditorium.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. We ask that you please note the time on the screen as far as your comments are concerned, and we ask that you conclude your comments immediately upon the expiration as reflected on the screen in front of you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up this evening to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we do have five speakers signed up to speak tonight, and each will have up to three minutes. And our first speaker is Chris Spigner.
Hi, I'm Chris Spigner, and I'm here tonight to speak out and ask the council to vote to amend the proposed boat landing ordinance to allow the larger commercial boats to use Carol Campbell Marine Complex. I could tell that there were many questions during this discussion portion of the second reading that needed answers, so please feel free to ask me during discussion tonight. I'll be glad to answer what I can. Many of you have questions about why this should be done for just one boat. This change would ensure that there is a place for more tour charter boats to run that can accommodate large groups with affordable tourism in our county because there are no boat slips available safely for safely boarding passengers and to be able to leave out of in the county, really. Let me tell you a little bit more about Rover Tours. They are dedicated to ecotourism and protecting our pristine waters. We have worked closely with many organizations, like Winyar Rivers Alliance, the South Carolina Nature-Based Tourism Association, Keep Georgetown Beautiful, the Yonki Conservation Organization, and others. We also give back to our community in many, many ways. For example, we donate a yearly trip for a local church to take a group out to North Island for a meaningful baptism. We also donate tickets to numerous fundraisers for auctions and raffles. We participate in river cleanups and take staff and volunteers out to North Island after hurricanes and tropical storms for cleanup. We have received the Georgetown County Tourism Leadership Award in the past, as well as numerous self-awards voted on by the public year after year for Best Boat Tour, Best Family Outing, and other categories. We are passionate what we do to educate our passengers on the conservation and preservation of our waters. Please vote to amend. Thank you for your time.
Denzon Winley.
Mr. Chairman, members of county council, matter administrator. Thank you. My name is Denzon Winley, and currently I serve as your Recycling and Collection Supervisor for Environmental Services. Unfortunately, I will be resigning this upcoming Friday, but before I leave, I wanted to shine a particular spotlight on some great individuals who I've had to play. had the pleasure to work with for the past year and a half. Well, all of our county employees are awesome. We can all acknowledge that. I want to say that, in particular, your collections crew is outstanding. I'd like to acknowledge them by name, starting with Mr. Matthew Sellers, your crew chief, Mr. Cortez Coings, Ms. Tiara Lewis, Mr. Ferran Joy, and Mr. Fred Somthing. I remind the public and council members that solid waste is certainly a nonstop business. It takes a lot of logistical planning to remove it from all 15 of our recycling centers in Georgetown County, and your crew does it efficiently. Those individuals who are named deserve many things, as we all do. But among them, first and foremost, is our admiration and respect. And as I transition, I state firmly that they deserve a supervisor who will consistently advocate for their well-being, and someone who will consistently look out for their best interests. In addition, they deserve a fleet that remains modern and on schedule. They deserve a salary schedule that can indicate where they could end up if they were to stick with county employment. And lastly, and as I said firstly, they deserve all of our respect. Until about two months ago, collections did not have a full crew going on three years. And I believe in the budget, we are allocated eight positions. It's been difficult, but by the grace of God and the work of the administration, we are nearly there this year. So lastly, and again, they have my full respect, my admiration, my backing, and it is my hope that they will continue to have yours in other publics. So thank you, Matthew, Cortez, Tiara, Ferran, and Fred.
I want to thank you once again for the opportunity to address you all tonight. I want to express thanks for the distance you have come on the boat landing project so far. I think a lot of good things have transpired, but I don't think you've come quite far enough. In the last, or since the last meeting, I was privileged to receive an email that I think all of you all received also, that went in some of the details of the questions you asked at the last county council meeting. And basically, what this email says is that the only thing that is lacking from what we would like to see is the ability for the larger boats to pull up Carol Campbell, load and unload people, not to dock, not to spend time, not to stay, not to create any problems, just load and unload, so that we can experience the beauty of the county that we have around us. I also noticed in this email that one particular tour boat in its existence has paid over $1 million in taxes to Georgetown County. This particular boat will be eliminated. Didn't know we had enough money we could throw $1 million away and not see a little bit of a tweak in the economy. So what I'm simply asking for is let's give everybody a fair shake. Let's work together. Let the people who want to enjoy our wildlife, our nature, our scenic beauty have the opportunity to do it. The way it is now, if you don't own a boat, you can't go. Thank you for your time. Please consider the amendments to the proposal.
Thank you.
Clarissa Tooten.
Good evening. I recently sent you all an email with a nine-page document explaining kind of what we were asking for, clearing up some of the confusion about last meeting. I just want to say, you know, we are not asking for access to every single landing for these larger vessels. Every single landing in our county simply cannot handle that size, or the traffic, or the parking. Carol Campbell can. Again, it has 200 parking spots for boats with trailers, or 100 parking spots for cars, and 150 boats with trailer spots. This should be a landing-by-landing approach. It should not be a blanket statement for the entire county because that will never work. I actually had the chance of speaking with a guy that did ecotourism in Charleston County this weekend when I was presenting at a conference. He said that they did not have this issue in Charleston County because they have more places to, or more boat slips. The issue with Georgetown, well, it's not really an issue, but we have so much of our wetlands and our marshlands that are conserved, but that causes an issue in that we aren't able to construct enough boat slips for these larger vessels in an area where the community can also access. So that's really the main issue that we have, is that, you know, we have so much land conserved, and we shouldn't get rid of that. But we have to kind of work with this issue. So again, it should be a landing-by-landing approach. I hope you all were able to read through at least some of the things that I included in that nine-page document. If you have any questions, feel free to email me. Thank you.
Good evening, council. The difficult part of which you have in front of you on this boat landing regulation is that it's a countywide decision, and there's geographical differences throughout the county and all the different landings. All the ramps are set up different. The parking is different. So no two areas are the same. I'm not sure that the information you have is enough to make a decision. What I'd ask that you do is postpone tonight's third reading so you can gather more information. I've spoken with one or two of you through email, one in person with you, but there's not enough information for you to make a decision on the public landings doing commerce. Merrill's Inlet, the area that I come from, is the busiest ramp in the state. Adding four higher traffic with the amount of growth that we have is just not sustainable Parking is already an issue. There is dock space available for these boats for hire. There are a number of charter boats that are already paying for slip and working against some of these boats that are using these facilities. So we do business with some of these folks. I don't know what the answer is, but I'd suggest that, as a group, you try to collect more information to understand what's possible across the county, or if you have to make decisions for each ramp. Thank you.
That is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Also, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that some comments were submitted to council to be included within the records?
Those were for a public hearing that's coming up later.
Public hearing, okay. Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. We move on down to our consent agenda. There are six matters on the consent agenda which have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number 23-025, labor and materials for installation or replacement of chain link fences as needed. Procurement number 23-050, Sandy Island School renovations phase two. Procurement number 23-058, weapon mitigation credits for East Andrews Drainage Improvements Project. Procurement number 23-072, HVAC units for Judicial Center. Procurement number 23-073, used Doja for County landfill. And procurement number 23-05, ambulance for County Fire and EMS. Now we move on down to our public hearings. Ordinance number 23-34, to amend the future land use map for a 6.09 acre parcel located on the end of Oak Ridge Lane in the Sanpete Community of Georgetown, identified as TMS number 01-0425-043-22-03 for medium to low-density residential. The public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-34 is not open. Anyone desire to speak on doing the public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-34? Seeing none, the public hearing is not closed. We move on down to the public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-36, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County Comprehensive Plan to Add the New Resiliency Element. The floor is not open for public comment regarding ordinance number 23-36.
Good evening. My name is Becky Ryan. I'm the North Coast Office Director of the Coastal Conservation League. First and foremost, I want to thank the planning staff and SVP for their hard work in drafting this resilience element, especially taking into consideration comments over the last several months to include feedback from all over the county. I think it's gotten to a really good place, and I would encourage you to pass this element this evening and get to work on drafting ordinances to see implementation for the goals and objectives included within it. I see a lot of similarities with the recommendations from the Boudreaux Group from the presentation that we had last evening, so I look forward to seeing how that draft of the land use element and the deferred natural resource element can all work together to create a path for Georgetown County to be strong, adaptive, and thriving for the, at least the next 10 years with this comprehensive plan. So thank you for your consideration, and please pass this element this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak on ordinance number 23-36? Seeing none, public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-36 is not closed. We move on down to the public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-37, an ordinance to amend the Comprehensive Plan for Georgetown County to Add the Revised Community Facilities Element. The floor is not open for comments regarding ordinance number 23-37. Anyone desire to speak on ordinance number 23-37?
Mr. Chairman, as you stated earlier, two individuals have provided written comments in regards to ordinance number 23-37, Ms. Sandra Bundy and Mr. Gary Weinrich. Each member of council has been provided with copies of those comments, and they will also be included in the permanent record of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no other comments regarding ordinance number 23-37, the public hearing regarding same is not closed. We move on down to appointments to boards and commissions. Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. We will turn it over to Madam Administrator, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, County Council has named three individuals to serve on the 2023 Capital Project Sales Tax Commission, and those individuals are Gary C. Cooper Jr., Robert E. Crenshaw,
Do we need a vote to approve those individuals?
As we do.
I would suggest that the council at least vote to approve those three. Yes, sir. And to confirm their nominations and election.
Thank you. You've heard the three names for appointment to the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. They are Gary C. Cooper, Robert Crenshaw, and Ashley Nelson.
And Gary Cooper.
Yes, Gary Cooper. Yes. Is there a motion to approve those individuals to serve on the Capital Project Sales Tax?
They're moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Mercado, they're second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Let's move on down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-33, to rezon approximately 2.36 acres of property located at the corner of Trinity Road and Sarah Drive, identified as TMS number 03-0450-024-05-01, from Forest Agricultural to one-half acre residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. This is a request from a Mr. Edwards, who is the agent for the property owner, Mr. Stephen Hughes, and their request, as you said, is to rezone 2.36 acres from FA to one-half acre residential. This property is at Trinity Road and Sarah Drive. We have had no changes in this request since second reading. The future land use map designates this property appropriately for low-density residential. This is, we do not consider this to be spot zoning. The request is of significant size, and the adjacent planned development has lots that are also half-acre. As a reminder, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for this rezoning request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 23-34? Sorry.
I know.
No, I think I may have missed it. I'm sorry. Is ordinance number 23-33? Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 23-33?
It's a move.
It's a move for the approval of ordinance number 23-33. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott, second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Thank you, motion carries. Now we go down to ordinance number 23-34, to amend the future land use map for a 6.09 acre parcel located on the end of Oak Ridge Lane in the Sanpete Community of Georgetown, identified as TMS number 01-0425-043-22-03 for medium to low-density residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. As we did at second reading, I will address these two items, 10B and 10C, together as they involve the same tract of land. This request is from a Ms. Marcy West, who is agent for the property owner, who is Mr. Winston McKenzie. This request involves a little over six acres, and it is to go from Village 10,000 Square Foot Residential, or VR10, to Forest and Agriculture FA. The future land use map here designates this property for medium density. FA, as you know, is a low-density designation. That's why we have the future land use map amendment along with the rezoning request. This is not a spot zoning request. It is also of significant size, and it is directly adjacent to other FA zoning. The Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval for this change. No one signed up to speak at the public hearing, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have on 10B or 10C.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council for Ms. Richardson? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 23-34?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the land use for, on ordinance 23-34.
Yeah, a motion for Councilor Carolina for approval to amend the future land use As stated in the ordinance number 23-34, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to ordinance number 23-35, an ordinance to rezone approximately 6.09 acres located off Oak Ridge Lane in the Sanpete Community, identified as TMS number 01-0425-043-22-03 from Village 10,000 Square Feet Residential to Forest Agricultural. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is a, just a zoning change for the same tract, the same 6.09 acres.
Thank you. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-35?
It's a move, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Councilor Newton for adoption of ordinance number 23-35. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 23-36, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County Comprehensive Plan to Add the New Resiliency Element. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. As we said last month, this is a new element to our comprehensive plan. It's a new requirement by the state. You have the draft in front of you. We do have a couple of changes since we discussed this last at second reading, which I'll go over briefly. We updated the executive summary. That's on page three. The state recently released their Strategic Statewide Resilience and Risk Reduction Plan, so we felt that we should at least... so we felt that we should at least reference that in this document. So that is addressed with a link there in the summary. Also, per Councilmember Anderson's request, recommendation eight, identify vulnerable infrastructure, on pages forty-one and forty-two. We've amended that to add a new action item that centers on the need for revised flood modeling and additional river gauges for the tidal rivers in our area. The last change is on the sources page. We referenced a journal article that talks about the need for river modeling in Georgetown County. We added that to the source page, so we would have a source for that action item. Beyond that, we don't have any other changes to the element, and the Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval for the document.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council?
But, yes. Does this ordinance match up anyway with the South Carolina Office of Resiliency and the programs that they provide? And, number one, do they parallel? Do they match up? Are we moving along with the state office and their mandate? And have we submitted any grants through them that we've been successful in getting? And how will it further benefit Georgetown County?
I have reviewed an outline of the state plan that was recently passed. Like I said, it hasn't been out there for very long. It is, I think, set up in sort of the same format as ours. Their recommendations match up with a lot of ours. They also talk about the need for additional data collection, river modeling. They look at buyout programs, for example, are mentioned. They have a whole list of, I think, twelve to fifteen recommendations that run the gamut, but I do think it touches on the same sort of issues that we address here. There does have a focus on flooding, of course. I think that's what kind of kicked off this whole process. Ours tries to cover all hazards. Again, the majority of the focus is on flooding, but we did try to cover all of them with ours. In terms of grant, the county has done some grants through that office. We did recently complete a buyout for a small lot. We have not done a lot of them, no, sir.
Okay. So far, we've only done one buyout.
I'm not sure if I can say that, but I, I'm familiar with one.
Okay.
That I was involved with. I do think we've looked at them for studies and drainage studies and stormwater plans and things like that. We've worked with those office on those sort of, the grants, as opposed to a buyout.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carolina, I can talk to that somewhat. Mr. Funny and I have been working on a grant for, with them for probably about eight or nine months to take care of five miles of drainage ditches in your, in your, your district. And as a matter of fact, I queried him on where he was with that last week, and he's still waiting to hear back, but this, the grant would take care of not only the engineering of the thing, but also with the construction. So they are working on that for us.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I've got a comment from Ms. Holly. Thank you so much for putting the stuff in there about the flood modeling, because it's something we still desperately need to have done for the next hurricane season. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the presentation from Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-six. Is there a motion regarding it?
Mr. Chairman?
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-three thirty-six. I'm sorry.
We have a motion from Counselor Anderson for approval for adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McAdo. And you heard Ms. Richardson say that some changes were made, so is there an amendment to incorporate the revisions proposed by the planning staff?
I may.
Moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor McAdo. We first vote on the amended motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now we'll go back to the main motion, which includes the revision just adopted. Is there a motion? Well, we have a motion. Any discussion regarding the amended motion? Any discussion regarding the amended motion? Okay. All in favor of the amended motion with the revision, please raise your hand. Oppose? All right, motion carries. All right, got through that one. We move on down to ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-seven, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan for Georgetown County to add the revised community facilities element. Ms. Richardson, you're busy tonight.
Yes, sir. This is a familiar element to you. It's not new. It's one that we have revised to meet our ten-year timeframe. Unfortunately, I do also have some changes to this one for you. Those changes are actually in front of you, pages fifteen and sixteen. We received some comments just today on the stormwater and the MS four sections, so those sections have been clarified somewhat based on those comments. There was some question about the water quality monitoring that's referred to and Coastal Carolina's involvement in that. We also reworded the language that dealt with the Merle's Inlet Watershed Plan, and that was drafted by Waukesha Regional Council Government under a grant. So we've changed the language to reflect that accurately. So we are proposing those changes. Again, the Planning Commission also held a public hearing on this item and recommended approval for the document.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-seven? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-seven?
So moved.
Move for adoption of ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-seven by Counselor McAdos, their second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Is there a motion to incorporate the revised revisions proposed by the planning staff?
I may.
Moved by Counselor Elliott, is there a second for the revisions?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. We will first vote on the amended motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll now go back to the main motion with the revisions. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Main motion carries with the revisions. We will move on down to ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight, an ordinance to amend Chapter Six, Section Six dash Three of the Georgetown County Court of Ordinances pertaining to public boat landing regulations. Ms. Richardson.
She's doing a great job. I was just going to sit here and let her keep going. Mr. Chairman, this, this ordinance has had no changes since the second reading. It's had a lot of discussion. If there's any questions for council, I would recommend approval of it, based on the discussions that I've had with council and other discussions that I've had, but I understand council may have some more questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions from council regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight for our attorney? Okay, no questions. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight?
I make a motion we defer this ordinance to a later time, where you can get some more information on this.
We have a motion for Counselor Elliott to defer ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight for more additional information. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight is deferred. We will move on down to our second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-nine, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County Court of Ordinances, Chapter Seven, Buildings, Construction Related Activities, Article Six, Impact Fees, to incorporate the capital improvement plan and development impact fee study prepared by Tischler Bice and dated November twenty-second, 2023, and update the associated impact fee amounts. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. You had a breather there.
Back again, back again. As you know, we retained the firm, Tischler Bice, to prepare a impact fee capital improvement plan and the development impact fee study last year. That study is included in your packet. These fees are, of course, one-time payments for a development's proportionate share of the capital cost of infrastructure. Impact fees have to comply with a specific state statute, Section 6.1-91, and they cannot be used for ongoing operations or maintenance. They must be used for capital projects. The building department collects an impact fee when a building permit is issued for new construction or for additions. Our current ordinance was approved in 2009, and it was to be terminated within fifteen years of its effective date. The current termination is coming up in the next year. That's why we are here today to talk about revised impact fees and why we hired Tischler Bice to do the study for us. As you can see on page six of the study, the new numbers are there, and again, those are the maximum supportable numbers that they've provided for us. As we discussed in our earlier workshop, the library impact fee is proposed to be removed as those projects are nearing completion. And also, the other biggest change is that they are recommending to charge residential impact fees based on the size of the structure, based on the square footage. Currently, we have a flat fee based on whether it's a single family or multifamily, and this would be based on the square footage of the structure. The study also includes an impact fee-related CIP. Those projects are listed on page thirty-eight of the study. The fees here can be recommended at 100% or at a lesser amount. We've also discussed the phasing in of the fees, at 75% for year one, 85% for year two, and then, of course, 100% by the third year. The Planning Commission reviewed this study earlier in the year. They are recommending adoption of the study and the fees with the phased-in approach that we've discussed. Also wanted to address a couple of questions you all had from the workshop we had earlier. Some numbers from Ori County are included in your packet in number eleven. They do have three types of impact fees, and those numbers are provided for you there. We also looked at the phasing in of the fees and made some assumptions. If we collected in these three years the same amount we collected in FY 2023, how that would affect the numbers, and those are provided there as well. Again, these are very rough estimates, and it makes a big assumption that the collection amount would be the same, even with the new fee schedule, but that's kind of the best guesstimate we can make to give you some information there. I also included a table that showed the number and types of permits that, that we have collected. I think we had a question, are we still trending up? Are we trending down? The numbers in your packet there pretty much show that residential numbers have come down since the high of 2020 and 2021. Commercial numbers are up, and additions and renovation permitting for residential is up significantly. So you gross, you win some, you lose some, a little bit of up and down there in those numbers. The ordinance that's attached is still under legal review. The attorneys are debating the language. I anticipate we will very likely have some clarification changes prior to third reading, but we don't anticipate any changes to the proposed numbers or the underlying assumptions from the impact fee study. I'll be glad to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Go, council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Ms. Richardson, Dorchester and Charleston County, excluding municipalities, has no impact fees. Why?
I could not speak to that, and I was kind of surprised. I thought that Charleston County did, to be honest with you. Perhaps what we've heard is City of Charleston, Mount Pleasant, their municipalities, but our information that we collected said Charleston County did not.
I do know their, their budgets are much different than ours. Similar areas, but were much smaller. The amount we collected this year will be, or last year was $1.6 million.
Yes, sir.
And?
That's the 2022 numbers.
Twenty-twenty-two.
This was the last number I had.
And this year's expected to be about the same? This, if this is passed, it would go into effect immediately at the third reading?
No, sir, not until?
Fiscal year?
2025, which would be next July.
Next July, okay. And that would, with the different fee schedule, and we're, it looks like we're prorating it up 10, 15%. 10% first year, 15% second year, till we get it back to 100% implementation. And that's going to be collecting less money than what we're collected. We'll collect less money in '25 than what we did in '22 or '23, so to speak.
Potentially. It just depends on what kind of development we see in that year. The commercial numbers have increased, so if we were to continue to see more commercial, new commercial development, then we could collect more to make up for the difference where the residential fees have dropped down. And again, we're not collecting the library fee, so the library fees have been taken out of this. So it's kind of hard to say without knowing exactly what type of permits we will get.
Okay, it's no secret, I've never been a fan of impact fees. I'm trying to understand it as best I can. Is there any coalition between, that you have read or know of, between collecting impact fees and development? Does it deter development, speaking residential?
I will tell you, I've heard that it depends on the, the value of the structure, so obviously a $3,300 fee is more important if you're building a $120,000 house, which we are not seeing that many new $120,000 houses right now. But that is a, a bigger impact than if you were building a, you know, half a million dollar structure. You know, we did say when we initially passed the impact fees, we would know if, if we started, our numbers started to drop, and while other places like Ori County continued to grow. You see, when we passed those fees in 2009, so development started to drop anyway, certainly we don't think that was due to the impact fees.
We were right in the middle of a recession when we implemented that. Kind of hard to figure out, understand that.
It's hard to draw a cause and effect there.
Yeah. Going over to the commercial side, which generally, some of the commercial buildings that are put up, and that we're currently putting up, are huge buildings, comes along with huge impact fees. What, what is our method? Is there anything we can do to lessen the impact of that fee on the individual company looking to come into our county?
There is an economic development provision that allows some waiver of the fee for economic development purposes. I will say that the consultants are always quick to tell me, and I think our ordinance reflects this as well, that the county then has to make up that cost. We will have to fund that, that same amount elsewhere. We, we can't just write it off, but it'll have to be paid from a different, I mean, I would assume from tax, property tax, some other form of revenue would have to be paid with if we, if we waived it for economic development purposes, and for that matter, for affordable housing. It has to be made up with some other revenue.
Is there any mechanism for, just speaking on industry, is there any mechanism that we have in place that could lessen the impact by prorating it over a period of, of years?
Yes. What's, what's happened in the last couple of years, we have used special revenue credit for those businesses on the, for ED projects. Again, it gives them opportunity to spread that cost over a number of years for us to be able to do that. And we have used that instrument. That doesn't work for every business, but that is certainly one method that's been used in the last couple of years for some of these. I think we would be remiss if we didn't discuss with a lot of our projects that we're seeing, especially on the ED side, where we see the highest impact fees is on the fire side, which is under another ordinance that's not before you tonight. which is under another ordinance that's not before you tonight.
Those are based on the value of construction. So obviously, as the value of that building gets larger, so does that fire impact fee.
I know most, most of the larger companies that come in, they have a staff that's generally accustomed to development and are familiar with these terms. Is this something that, that some of the smaller businesses that do not have that availability to the expertise of development? Do, do we offer them or make them aware of some of the vehicles of, that we have at our disposal to prorate some of these fees to lessen the burden on them as a new startup business, which is the most critical time of any business is those first three years? And then when we get them to come here, and then we automatically hit them with these high impact fees?
I don't think that conversation generally happens through, through my office, through the regulatory department. But I, I do think economic development and administration probably do have those conversations as they talk to new customers, new business.
Now I'm gonna do something else. I'm gonna leave you alone, okay? I, I've got, you know, we've been through this impact fee thing here recently with Brook Green Garden, and I learned a little bit about that. And there's a lot of state law that controls what we're able to do with impact fees, as I recall. Is that not right?
That's correct.
Right. So it, it's, it gets complicated.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 23-39? Hearing none. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-39?
A minute.
It's moved by Counsel Elliott for adoption of ordinance number 23-39. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCallough. Since there have been some revisions, is there a motion to incorporate the ordinance that was briefly read into the record by title only?
So moved.
It's moved to amend the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second on the amendment. Any discussion regarding the amended motion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We have 5-3. Now we will go on down to the main motion, which, which incorporate the, the ordinance text. Any discussion regarding the main motion? All in favor of the main motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion passes, 5-3. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, can we just clarify that vote, please? I recorded 5-2.
5-2, I'm sorry. I kept saying 5-3. Yes, it's 5-2. With Counsel Newton and Elliott, and Newton, Newton and Carolina voting opposition. I'm sorry. My math is kind of off, you know? Thank you. We'll, we'll go down to our first reading of ordinances, which will be read into the, the record only. Ordinance number 23-42, to amend the Future Land Use Map for a 5.13 acre parcel located at 999 Aviation Boulevard, further identified as TMS number 01-0447-000000 from industrial to medium density residential. Ordinance number 23-43, to rezone one parcel totaling 5.13 acres located at 999 Aviation Boulevard, identified as TMS number 01-0447-010000 from limited industrial to 10,000 square feet residential. Then ordinance number 23-44, to authorize and approve an amended and restated agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park by and between Georgetown County and Ori County, with property located in Ori County Ascot Valley Commerce Park, to require the payment of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes by businesses and industries located in the park to apply zoning and other laws in the park, to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park, and to provide for the jurisdiction of park revenues within the county. We will move down to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion for the approval of our regular council meeting minutes of October 24, 2023? Is there a motion for adoption?
A minute.
Move by Counsel Elliott for adoption of our regular council meeting minutes of October 24, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCallough. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before counsel? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's moved by Counsel McCallough. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Carolina. All in, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. We now stand adjourned.